Okay, I wanna call the meeting to order.
Karen, Karen, Carl.
Here.
Charlie.
Here.
Joan, Karen, Andy.
Here.
Stand for the pledge. Okay, you guys can talk for a while while we finish vouchers.
So how did you make that look at these? I know you were all like twelve and you were on my side.
Yeah. Yeah. So you don't do that by that.
Alexis is interested in.
Well, my next show, we were there.
Possibly making a deal with you on the cut.
How long were you there?
They're still selling.
So I got a question. You know, I'm just.
I know.
What makes them, so these are like regular. This time of year, what makes someone go outside the tree instead of inside?
They swore. We made our branch.
We still gotta feed your family.
Where we got this year.
Yeah.
I'm like usually. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I got it.
We have to do separate. So to.
Right, this is. And if you look at. No, so it's easier. So. Basically.
They look. That's why.
This is the most.
We just remember. Right, right. They're really well. You have something pretty. Well, I just sound like.
So I guess. It's so hard.
All the meeting back to order. Okay. I'm going to read a legal notice that was in the paper. Actually, an open public hearings. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Sterling on September twenty third, twenty twenty four at seven oh five P M. At the town office located at twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six. Regarding the adoption of a local law number two repealing previous local laws for senior citizens exemption for taxation purposes. Of the town of Sterling for the year twenty twenty four, which would establish a senior citizens exemption for taxation purposes. Any resident of the town of Sterling is entitled to be heard upon said proposed local law. It's at such public hearing copies of said proposed local law are available for review at twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six. By the order of the town board of the town of Sterling dated August twentieth, twenty twenty four, Tony Crownish Shield Deputy Clerk. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Sterling, September twenty third, twenty twenty four at seven ten P M. At the town office located twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six regarding the adoption of the local law number three. Repealing previous local laws for partial exemption from real property taxes to persons with disabilities who have limited income. Of the town of Sterling for the year twenty twenty four. Which would establish a partial exemption from real property. To persons with disabilities who have limited incomes any resident of the town of Sterling is entitled to be heard upon said proposed local law. At such public hearing copies of said proposed local law are available for review at twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six. By the order of the town board of the town of Sterling dated August twentieth, twenty twenty four, Tony Crownish Shield Sterling Deputy Town Clerk. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town of Sterling Board. On Tuesday, uh, September twenty third, twenty twenty four at seven fifteen P M. At the Sterling Town Hall, twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six to hear all persons regarding the adoption. Of a local law overriding the tax levy for twenty twenty five. Copies of the pro- proposed local law are available at the Sterling Town Clerk's Office, twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six. All persons so interested will be heard at such time and place. By order of the Sterling Town Board, Tony Clerk, Tony Crownish Shield Sterling Deputy Clerk. Okay. Can I get a resolution to open the public hearing on local law number two tax exemption for senior citizens?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen, yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes, Andy.
Yes. Can I get a resolution to open the public hearing on local law number three tax exemption for persons with disabilities who have limited incomes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen, yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes.
Yes. Resolution to open a public hearing on local law number four to override the tax levy for twenty twenty five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Karen, yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes.
Yes. Okay. Now, I will open it to privilege of the floor. Um, but first I will read the directions for the privilege of the floor. It's the board's discretion to invite public participation. Persons desiring to speak at the public meeting or hearing must sign up, sign on the sign up sheet. If one is provided or raise one's hand to be recognized, the speaker may not address the board until recognized by the chairperson of the board. The speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, the speaker will give his or her name, address and organization, if any, and the subject he or she. Is willing, it will be addressing, the speaker must address the board and not individual board members. Discussion between speakers and attendees of the public meeting or hearing are prohibited. A speaker may disagree with or support prior speakers and comments directed to the board. Comments must relate to the purpose of a hearing or a legitimate town business at a board meeting. Speakers should present their remarks in a courteous manner and may not make personal comments about public officials, town residents or others. Placards, banners or other signs are not permitted in the meeting room nor the distribution of flyers. A person who disregards the directives of the chairperson in enforcing the rules disturbs the peace. At a meeting making. Impertinent or slanderous remarks or generally conducts himself or herself in a boisterous. Or inappropriate manner while addressing the board shall be barred from further participation and forfeit any balance of the time remaining for his or her comments. After a final warning, if a speaker refuses to step down, the chairperson can re- request that a police officer or peace officer remove the individual from the meeting room. Okay, with that. I will open it to privilege of the floor. Lee.
Any update on water district two?
Uh, we will get to that in the committee updates.
Okay.
Can you just confirm if anyone has any questions about the public hearing? So we, we have three concurrent public hearings and make sure that they ask questions and they would. A lot more creation and comments about that.
Yes, this is the time if you have. Anything you would like to voice or ask regarding the public hearings. Uh, now is the time to speak, uh, as well as any other business you wish to address the board.
Is that what you want to meet?
Yes, yeah, public hearings are a little different from meetings, so that's why I just wanted to make sure that they understood this would be a. Time to get clarification.
Okay.
Am I supposed to do?
Judy.
Yes. Um. I assume you've been meeting on your budget already. Do you have any idea whether you expect to exceed the tax cap? For during resolution or three?
Do you have any idea? We, we meet on the budget, um, in the first week of October, we'll be. Doing a resolution for that, uh, at tonight's meeting, but, um, I can't speak to that at this point.
If I may, just my recollection is the two percent is that concern and Pat Crane could probably better address this. It will keep her, is that about the special districts more so than the general fund and the others? It's because we don't have a lot of control over the special districts. Um, and, um, so that's my belief, it's not that we're intentionally gonna look at the general fund and go, oh, let's go over the two percent cap. It's more about the special districts. That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. One more, oh.
I, I'm down a short slide. Um. I don't know what you mean when you say special districts, would you mind informing me everything about that?
Uh, Andy, do you wanna address that?
You can go first.
Okay, so we have, um, special districts, one, um, category is the lighting districts. So Sterling Valley actually has its own lighting districts. And those that live in that geographic area actually pay. X dollars to have those few lights there in Sterling Valley, Sterling Center, I don't Marville, I know there, yeah, Marville. Um, another category, um, would be the water districts. So North Sterling has Water District one. And only the people that live or have property in Water District one. Pay for that.
Essentially, it's, sorry, I didn't mean. Essentially, what it is, is it's districts. That receive special services within those districts that the rest of the town does not receive, so they essentially pay. You know, for that service.
And I think the last is fire districts.
Yes.
So those are our categories and, and the districts are defined geographically, in other words, have boundaries. But that's a good question.
Remotes? Okay. Uh, Department of Reports, Kirk.
Well, we're finishing our summer work. Do trees to paint out. And. We, uh, self transolve, here's your winner. We are starting to actually work on trucks, you wonder, you know, it's. Been eighty degrees every day, but we're about a month away from snow, possibly, so. So it takes a while, our trucks get inspected from top to bottom, front to back. All the oils changed, so it's a time consuming process, so we start a little early. But, uh. Other than that, like say we're wrapping up small projects before winter. Suzie's been working with the highway department on, um, the historic road sites. Like in Marco, there's one and there's badly, there's one, seven, there's one, there's two, sorry. Three out of four are back on their posts, all refurbished and painted. The fourth one should be done any day now. So that project is almost done. And the highway guys haven't looked into the pedal ball. They don't play yet, cause I know all. But we're figuring out how to get a hole in pavement to set the posts, so. In case anyone wants to know. And. I know you all got this, the building fall contract is, anybody have any questions?
Yes. Sir, just reading through it, I'm thinking to myself. It's a lot. A lot more responsibility for the guys, you know, providing we get snow and stuff like that. Are we comfortable, I mean, are you comfortable, you know the guys better than I do. Are they comfortable with handling the village?
We've been handling it for five years.
I know, but it just seems like now, not that with that, besides the snow removal and ice control, they're wanting paving and other.
Well, we've always helped, we've always helped with the paving and it's very, a lot of the paving is, uh, done turnkey by, uh, how many, like, last year we did a, a job. We don't have to, they don't have to, set up a stone command, it was a turnkey job. We had to do the, the initial setup and everything, but excuse me, they. They committed, but other than that, like if they're, depending on the process, we always haul their stone anyways. And, you know, do whatever we can, we always help.
You know, so. Long as I just. Reading through it, I wanted to make sure you're comfortable with the guys, the labor, it just seems like. You guys are getting more and more filed out, yeah.
No.
We, this, this always better, it's, I mean. Yes and no, but it's always better, but it starts falling to us, I mean. It's, we've been doing it for five years, so.
Yeah. There was a question about the. Size of the truck and one of the areas, if you have to plow, you thought maybe.
There are certain roads that they, they continue to follow because there are no turnarounds on dead end roads.
Right.
They follow with a smaller five fifty truck. Cause we just can simply can't turn our truck around.
Yeah, and not entirely, but. The village is okay with still being able to do that service?
I'm assuming so, because it's been that way, well, I can't tell you the exact year that was amended. It was three years ago. It was amended that they, and, and the mileage was adjusted for that.
Patrick.
So.
Okay.
Let me just, so carbon, this is basically a, a copy of our county fall contract. So there's a base price and a per trip price.
Yeah, and as far what we did, um. The, the other portion, the road maintenance portion, that was a contract that was also expired. Um, that was tied to the maintenance for the water contract, so when that was canceled out, that was the ma- the road maintenance was canceled as well. So we put the plowing, the road maintenance together since those were services provided by the town.
Uh, what we can do is still. Keep on traveling.
Yeah.
Good. No Lisa, anything?
Suzie.
Absolutely, on August twenty third and twenty fourth, the. Play on Bell Kirk Ray was presented, we had full house on Saturday night. Uh, I've been doing some work for Man Right. Powers and the Rebecca's, the Adphones, Herbert and Albert Bags, uh, Rossiter Family and Loving Church. I guess it's Liva, is this correct name? Mrs. Eric Linglin and all the information about Bell Kirk Ray after seeing the play, so. Got that to her, uh, been doing research. A research project on the Markville Pond and Dam. And on Friday, I had a visitor all morning, um, Kathleen Conti is her name, and she's related to about two thirds of the people in the town of Sterling. That's it.
All right.
Were you mentioning about the poster or is that?
Uh, I could, if you wanted. The Village of Fairhaven is going to have a mural and it is probably going to be on the side of the hardware cafe that faces. East where the parking lot is, we don't have. The picture or anything or the. Mural, we're hopefully going to decide that we have a meeting tomorrow. Uh, we have talked to a few muralists. And unfortunately for us. The best one does three D work and if you've ever seen those pictures of people that do sidewalks and it looks like there's falls down in them and. All of those things on city sidewalks and other three D mural type things, this, uh. Gentleman out of Denver. Is a great muralist and he has also said he would be willing. To come next summer, but, you know, we would have to pay his expenses plus his fees for creating the mural, whatever we decide. Uh, we have, uh. Are using a poster right now from a gentleman who came here a few years back and picked my brain and. The sandbook and got, had me get more information for him and he created an art poster for his brother, he made a puzzle out of it. And, uh, it's all the village of Fairhaven, so I don't mention this very often. But the, uh, mural project group is in the process of selling those to, uh, earn money. To go toward creating the mural.
My show.
Oh, I just, I put it in Lisa's room.
Is that, is that what they were selling yesterday?
Yes.
At the Amber East?
Yes, and we sold that a few other. Yes, and we sold that a few other places, but yes. And so.
Looked like a very hard puzzle.
It was, and it, the actual puzzle had um pieces of boats and fish and all of those other kinds of things besides that, which we will never see. But he made it for his brother who lives on the west side in Fairhaven, at least in the summers. And uh he had told me to never show it to anyone, or never display it. So uh I showed it to the mural group and they just loved it dearly, so I was reluctant to call him. But I did, and he is letting us uh use his original to make posters out of and sell them. So we had to give him half of what we made. But he is the artist, and it's his his uh piece that we did.
Very cool.
Now, one of the things, for example, one of the things that I had to learn was, where were the ice races? On the bay in Fairhaven, they had horse races on the ice there, and I had never heard of it, so it took me some work to dig and find out exactly where that was on the bay. So he has that in his poster.
Yeah, it's basically, basically history, a lot of histories.
Yes, that's what it is, historical.
Historical Society, Lee?
Yeah, uh, historical society has received it as uh the uh, the ornament this year, and that's Sterling. This match is well recognized, the price is nineteen ninety-five. Pat has sung here, if anybody's interested, buy it tonight. Tomorrow, September twenty-fourth, it's the historical Saturday, it's me and will be George Clark as our speaker, talking about the plane crashes that happened on February eighteenth nineteen forty-four. The title's program is the Humpford Army Zero Four Seven. This is a V twenty-four bomber that crashed into Lake Ontario during a blizzard. And it's at seven o'clock tomorrow.
Great. Okay, committee reports. One, we'll do it, alright, so, Lee. To address your question, um the most recent update I have is we have received the extension um until March on the grant money. Um, so that's extended.
Is that both grants?
Yes. I had the one when I talked to you earlier last week, and then I got the other at the end of the week. Um, so we, we did get the funding, so the funding has been extended. Um, and we are scheduled to go to bid uh in October, it's right now, uh the final reviews of the drawings and everything have been resubmitted um after, just they get the comments back and then resubmit them, we're waiting on um the Department of Health, and then once we get that back, they can immediately go out to bid, which will hopefully, I don't know this for a fact, but that will help us for the extension into the spring to um you know, pay, finish paying for the system, because they'll be breaking ground, hopefully.
Great, thank you.
Um, may I ask, who's putting the bid packages together?
C two A.
Okay. And another may have some bearing or not, but is the consultant? Um Doug Miller involved with this?
He's in every meeting.
Okay. As a consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
For the town.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, emergency services, um oh, I forgot to tell you. I do, an update from right before this meeting. Uh, we have a meeting at four o'clock, or three, three thirty on Friday, here. For the contract. Cool, alright, excellent. Three thirty, right, yes. Sorry, I, I meant to tell you that, that happened. Okay, anything?
Uh, we just have a few people that need to do their violence in the workplace prevention and harassment. Uh, highway guys will be coming next, in the next couple of weeks to do a little online here at the town hall, so there are just a couple of board members and just a couple other little people that work on, after that.
Frank?
Oh, hello. Good evening, folks. Uh, you got my monthly report from Devon, and pretty much everything is there, and again, thank you for August fifteenth. Very good seniors, recognizing the seniors, plus, that Frank, that really, it was quite a moving project, we're, we're still overwhelmed with that. Okay, and then now what's going on, uh this, this coming Wednesday is the Senior Resource Fair, it's a bigger works than long. It's quite a deal, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on there that day. Um, it's everything to do with seniors, you know, say you got low income and stuff like that, which is also um, the Office of Aging will be there in Forest, and they'll be talking just about everything that they do in their office there and their programs for the people, so it's gonna be very interesting, you know, even if you get a chance, right, I think we'll be there, yeah. Yeah, and uh, it's very good, and I'll be there, so that's a plus, that's a plus right there.
Yes, sir.
But anyways, but uh, so that's about it, we got the report, but there is another report we gotta do because we got the month of October coming up, and that's strictly baseball, and we got playoffs, we got everything going on in the World Series, if it goes right to the end, it'll be November second for the last game. That is just overwhelmed with this, I think. Anyway, so right now, there's no game tonight, so we got lots of time in the morning.
I was already told you gotta be short, because he's waiting for the Buffalo game.
Even done the point, uh, the point, point toss, yes, okay. But anyway, oh, just, just hold that head there, we'll be outside here. But uh, right now, the next game the Yankees will be playing, we're playing Baltimore, which is a second place team, that should be good, I mean, uh they're both in position, Baltimore's sort of a wild card, and of course, uh Yankees are right in there, and that, so it should be interesting.
Should be, and, yeah. Oh, don't forget, uh, Friday, Office of the Aging is coming here too.
Okay, am I?
Yeah.
Okay, because I didn't get an email on that, or just a, a copy, but I wasn't sure if that was a date or not.
No, it's Friday. Yeah, yeah, this is your personal invitation.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. I'll be talking to Brendan, or Wednesday, so.
Okay.
Thank you, and then thank you guys for what you do for our seniors, it's really great. I'll tell you, it's a lot better than other towns, much better.
Yeah, below the towns don't have my friend Perkins.
Yeah, comes in with his BS, right? But no, you guys are great, so, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Zoni, John?
Um, we've been meeting regularly, uh, weekly, every other week. Um, and we did complete the forty-some questions that um we were tasked to do regarding the general code E three sixty. And um so, in fact, we even had a conference call, phone conference call with Barbara, who's one of the editors with that, and so helped give us some guidance. A number of the questions we've deferred, referred to our attorney. When it's referencing town law, DEC law, um, building codes, et cetera. But that's not our area of expertise, so we forwarded those questions to Kevin. And so now, we're in a position, we're gonna get back to looking at short-term rentals. And again, as I shared before, we're watching what's going on with the Village of Fairhaven as they proceed with their proposed local law for short-term rentals.
Okay, um, can I get a motion to accept the minutes for the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regularly? I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Well, I'm bigger.
Alright, bye. Uh, motion to accept supervisor's report for August twenty twenty-four?
I'll make that motion.
Well, bigger.
Bye.
Bye.
Hey, um, correspondence, um, the New York State, everybody sees, we, last week, we got uh, letter back from the New York State DOT regarding the intersection of thirty-eight and one oh four. Um, they have, in, in their letter, they uh stated that they did their research and over eighty-five percent of the traffic was going fifty-five or below at the intersection, therefore they uh, and, and not enough uh traffic accidents have happened at that location to warrant a reduction in speed. Um, so they said that they would uh, put signage up, but they did not list what kinds of sign or when they're gonna put the signage up. We got the letter from Miller Engineering regarding the Onionville Road Bridge uh in School Craft. And, um, anything else, anybody else to discuss in there?
Oh, yeah, that one letter, it's just a typo, I'm sure, I've gotta find it, because I doesn't look like there yet, um, the one regarding Onionville Road. At the end of the first paragraph, we anticipate the abutment repairs, et cetera, et cetera, to be in the range of approximately sixty comma zero zero point, so I'm like, what should that be?
Sixty thousand.
Okay. I assumed that, but didn't know if anyone.
Okay, um old business.
Oh, how about the Kewa County SPCA regarding creating an animal cruelty task force? Do you, can you, uh, mark out there, do you know much more of that?
Uh, the letter was in the packet.
Right.
I honestly, I didn't review it.
Okay. Do you know anything about that, Lisa? Something that the, they're needing, I guess.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't gone through it, I just, the letter is right here.
Right.
It's a flyer, basically.
Right, right, well, it was, uh, I've got the mail, the email right here, and. It just looks like they're looking for feedback from us. Well, maybe I'm reading into it too much in terms of our thoughts on that.
Okay. We can look into that.
The, that looks like they might want to establish a county animal cruelty task force. And I think they gave the qualifications, what they're looking for. Volunteers, but professionals, those related, you know, so, I didn't, I mean.
We can put it, we can put it on the boards. Hey, old business, um, cleanup day, so uh townwide cleanup day will be October fifth. Uh, which is a Saturday down here at the barn, um, for all town residents, we will be verifying address. That includes the Village of Fairhaven, um, but we will be verifying addresses, um, that we will also the reason is, is because uh more importantly than ever, we're accepting electronics, we've hired a vendor to accept electronics at this uh dump day, so that's special, because normally you can't drop TVs or electronics, so we wanna make sure that only our residents are, are using it, so we will be checking that, but that is why. Um, and we'll also, they'll, we'll also have paper shredding there as well. So uh, they'll have a truck and a shredder uh to shred, tread things, but all your household goods as well, and we just will not be able to accept anything with uh gas tanks, obviously. Um, you know, propane or hydrogen kind of tanks, pressure tanks. Um, or refrigerant. So, have any new business? Oh. So
Sorry.
New business, uh, we, we're going to schedule, and we'll vote on this uh coming up. Uh, schedule our review for uh the budget, our budget meetings will be October second and eighth. Uh, in the tenth, if necessary, at six P M here. Um, anybody kind of for that, all set?
I will not be here October second. Be flying back from Denver, so I know I don't.
Okay.
Um, and yeah, when do we get in the tentative budget?
Uh, the second.
Yeah.
I'll have it on the thirtieths.
Okay, she told me that I would have it on the thirtieths, okay. I just wanted to.
Okay, um, can I get a resolution to pay the operative vouchers?
I'll make that motion. Karen, yeah. Pearl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution to close public hearing on local law number two, tax exemption for senior citizens, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Karen? No, Pearl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Yes. Make motion, propose public hearing on local law number three, tax exemption for persons with disabilities who have limited incomes. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Andy?
Yes. Close hearing, or a motion to close public hearing on local law number four to override the tax levy for twenty twenty-five?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh resolution to pass local law number two, tax exemption for senior citizens, I'll make that motion.
Karen?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Resolution to pass local law number three, tax exemption for senior citizens.
People with disabilities. Oh, that's a typo there. Which is saying for, for people with disabilities, that's my error.
Oh, yeah, number six.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me just make sure.
Yeah, some numbers, do it. Yeah, number two was for the senior citizens.
Yeah.
The other one is for the disability.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So resolution resolution uh, pass local law number three, tax exemption for people with disabilities. I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Karen?
Yeah.
Pearl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes, and I'm, and I make a comment, and I guess it's intentional, but the income the table that shows the income range is the same for senior citizens as uh um, persons with disabilities, I just kinda noticed that, and I'm like, huh. Um, persons with disabilities, I just kinda noticed that, and I'm like, ah, um, saying.
Okay, resolution, pass local law number four to override the tax levy for twenty twenty five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll talk to that.
Karen, yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes, Andy.
Yes. Resolution to pull called the public hearing on the ambulance contracts on October twenty first, twenty twenty four at seven oh five P M. And authorize the town clerk to advertise for such hearing.
I'll make that motion, I'll second that.
Karen, yes, Carl, Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes.
Yes. Resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the plow contract with the village of Fairhaven for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen.
Yeah.
Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Yes. Number ten, a resolution that this board accepts the proposal for Miller Engineers.
Well, we could have skipped that one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ten is scared, my bad.
Well.
It's ten for you guys, my, mine is, uh, okay. Resolution, this board, that this board accepts the proposal for Miller Engineers Engineering Services. For the Onionville Road Bridge not to exceed seven, seven thousand five hundred dollars.
You know what it said?
That's what this is.
Isn't that his, his. Yeah, not who would see seven thousand five, his services.
Yeah, his services, that's for his services.
Right.
No, this is for his services.
Right, yeah, but yes, the sixty thousand, which was a typo.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it, because he's just super, he's overseeing the project.
Karen, yeah, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes.
Yes. Resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the Williamson Law Book for the computer support for the highway.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen, yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes.
Yes. Resolution, they'll hold a special meeting on October second, twenty twenty four. October eighth, twenty twenty four, and if needed, October tenth, twenty twenty four at six P M to review the twenty twenty five budget. And authorize the town clerk to advertise for such meetings.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Here, yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Joan, yes.
Yes. Resolution to hold a public hearing on the twenty twenty five preliminary budget on October twenty first, twenty twenty four. At seven ten P M and authorize the town clerk to advertise for such hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, Karen, yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan, yes.
Yes.